All right. I believe we are rock and roll. So. I'm Joe Awsham. I'm the advocacy chair for Northwest IC Council of PTAs. We have 29 PTAs throughout the school district of Northwest. We have 25,000 students and over 25,000 students in this school district. I have a son in middle school and I, you know, I'm excited about doing this form for all of our voters. We have our election coming up. So originally this election was supposed to be for the for the fall. I mean, for the for May, this past May, but because of COVID related issues pushing all elections back. We have it this November. So this form is for place six on the Board of Trustees for the Northwest IST. And I want to first of all, thank all of my PTA members who have sent me in questions. I really appreciate that. That's so helpful. And I want to go ahead and introduce Dr. Lilian Roush and Ms. Jennifer Zula. The the guidelines for how we're going to do this form, I'm going to first we'll go flip a coin to decide who's going to go first. And then we plan on this being 15 questions asked, at least 15 questions asked. I will read the question. The first person or the person who wins the edge of tails will will be the first one to respond. And they have two minutes to respond. And then when their time is up, the next person will have two minutes to respond. And then if the first person asked that question wants to rebut at all or say anything additional, they have they have 30 seconds that they're allowed to if they if they want to. And then the next question will be flipped. So then it would be person B. It was the person who got tails that time would then be the first one to ask. And we'll repeat that all the way through. And hopefully, we don't take too much time doing all that. And hopefully, we'll learn a little bit more about y'all and we'll see how my questioning skills are also. So but first of all, I would like each of you to introduce yourselves. About two minutes to each introduce yourself. Dr. Roush, can you go first?
Sure. I'm Lilian Roush and I have been in the I have been a school board member for six years. And during that time, I have 216 hours in continuing education through the Texas Association of School Boards. The reason I want to continue is because I want to continue to contribute to the community, the educational system by being a responsible steward, taking a reasoned and researched approach to maintain and improve the quality of the schools in NISD in a way that best serves the students, teachers, and the communities served by this district. I have been proud to serve as a member of NISD. And I think it has been a very educational and exciting experience for me, and I would like to continue it.
Excellent. Thank you. Mrs. Zula.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Zazula. And I'm a proud parent of a recent Byron Nelson High School graduate, 2019. My daughter is a middle school student there in Northwest. I have been in the field of education now for over 10 years. I'm currently an educational diagnostician for DITN ISD. I was also a teacher. And I think, you know, I think it's very important to have educators on the school board who are currently in the classrooms. This is not the the old classrooms back in the day. These are brand new, different types of education, different types of students, different types of curriculum. And I just think it's important that we have some sort of current educators on the board to help kind of advocate for for our students and our parents and our community as someone in the classroom can. I think it's important, you know, we are currently in our in the public school system with our kids. We personally see and feel how the decisions of the school board and the decisions of our administrators affect our students and affect our teachers. And I just think it's good to have that kind of eyesight on the board, on the board.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, y'all too. Here's our coin. So I was in the military for seven years. And in the military, we have a lot of we do. I was in Army specifically. But we give challenge coins out to folks. And I believe that it came back from the Roman times whenever generals would give coins. You know, they pay with coins to the soldiers that did well. So anyways, a friend of mine, Leroy Petrie, he was awarded the Medal of Honor a few years back. So we have the Medal of Honor on one side of his coin. And then we have his Ranger unit on the other side. Make sure we can actually see it on there. Okay. So before we do it, we'll let Mrs. Zula, do you want heads or tails? And the head will be the Medal of Honor. And then tails will be the military units.
I'll take heads.
Heads. Okay. Oh, that was a good flip. There we go. As it is. All right. Mrs. Zula will be first. Ray. All right. So the first question out, I sent y'all categories also. These are kind of in order of the categories also. So not completely, but kind of. So I'll start with the first question. And if you need me to repeat the question, just ask me to. So do you believe there's a lack of equitable education experience that remote learners are having compared to their in-person peers? If you do believe so, what solutions do you believe will improve the remote learning experience?
Okay, yes, actually, I do think that. And I don't think it's on purpose, but you know, I I have two master's degrees, one in special education, and that's currently where I work. And I know that children with learning disabilities, they are our most vulnerable population. And I know they do struggle with online learning. Children even on 504 plans who have, you know, situations like ADHD, they struggle. We have parents that are some are are one person, one parent income households. We have some who are double that and they don't have they don't have the parent there to help guide them and produce this organizational thing. My daughter's in middle school. She started out as a connected learner or an online learner because she has asthma, was worried about her going back. It was a hot mess. It was hard to. It was it was hard. She's an AP student. She loves school. She fell behind. I couldn't be there because I'm a single parent household, couldn't help her. And it's just, it was a struggle. And I I it's hard because districts, they were just throwing this this situation and they had to do the best that they could. And I understand that. But our job, the school is more than just provides academics. You know, we provide so many other things. We provide food. We provide shelter. Have kids that come to my campus to shower. So I just think it's important to keep that in mind. I think sometimes we lose sight that there are kids in those situations. And we have to try to figure out different ways in which we can reach all of them. Schools have to stay open for all kinds of kids. And so, you know, it's it's a situation in which you get together with your board. You hear your administrators, you bring in your teachers, who are your experts out there? And you listen to their guidance and what they think would be appropriate. And you bounce ideas off each other until all students have the ability to learn and be successful.
Excellent. Thank you. Dr. Roush, will you let me repeat the question?
Yes, please.
All right. Do you believe there's a lack of equitable education experience that remote learners are having compared to their in-person peers? If you do believe so, what solutions do you believe will improve the remote learning experience?
Okay, I just wanted to say that I have a master's in education in curriculum and instruction with emphasis on reading. And I have a PhD in reading and education. And I have a granddaughter in our district. And I have heard from lots of parents and read lots of letters. And the district understands that there is a bit of a difference between the face-to-face learning and the remote learning. And they are listening to everybody that is commenting, including the teachers. And they are trying to make those adjustments. And my understanding is that most of those inequities have to do with the different platforms that are being used. And also, as Jennifer said, not all of our households are the same. And I know that the state showed that the struggling the struggling children and the lower SES students were struggling more with remote learning than our different income level students. So it is a problem. And since this is a new situation that we haven't had to deal with in the past, they are working on it. I also know that we are not the only district in the state that's having some of those issues. And there are some districts that don't even offer face-to-face still. They're going to be doing remote for the whole semester.
Right. Excellent. Thank you. Mrs. Zula, would you like to respond at all? Are you good?
I just want to say, I think I think being able to have a background in special ed and working with students with disabilities, I think that helps. That's really important aspect and insight to provide to the board. Because I think sometimes those students are forgotten. Just it's just a way to kind of, I think it's just important to keep that that mindset for kids who struggle, who don't fit into that same size box as everybody else.
Right. Excellent. Thank you. All right. So now for question number two, we'll go to Dr. Roush first. If the voter-approved tax rate election, also known as the Vader, fails in this election or in May 2021, if on that ballot, how do you propose to close the gap on the $25 million budget shortfall for this school year and the possibility of cutting up to 55 million over the next three years?
Well, hopefully, that won't happen because hopefully it has been promoted as to how important that TRE is to our district. The bond is going to be building the buildings with the TRE is to pay for the teacher's income. And that's 77% of our budget when it comes to that area. And if we don't, what will happen is they will have to start cutting some of the programs because we are looking at having to make budget cuts due to the lack of funding the state. And the state has dropped from being pretty equal, 52%. Now they're only providing 38%. And the rest is coming from the property taxes. And this will not actually, even though it's going to raise it up, it's still going to be lower than the tax rate in 2018. And I hope that people realize how important it is to vote for the TRE and pass the TRE for the children and for the quality of our education.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Zula, would you let me repeat the question?
No, I think I'm I think I'm okay. So as being somebody who's not you know, and I'm not have sat down and had these conversations, I don't know all the specific ins and outs to sit here and say some things. However, I do think that, well, you know, true, it's only going to add four cents, you know, on to the voters. But if it's not voted in, I mean, your only other option would to look at your programs and maybe move them around. And there are, you know, some classes maybe have this many students and these classes have less students. I just, it's it's just taking your district as a whole and seeing, you know, what programs are popular, what programs are actually helping. You're just probably going to have to move the monies around and do the best that you can to budget. But we all know that the the educational financial system is just, it's just crazy. And it's nonsense. And we know that our schools struggle. And sadly, we are our hands are tied down here at the local level a lot. I think that's important when we remember that when we go to vote in our state and national elections. But you know, if it if it does, if it does not pass, our, I think, only option is to sit back and take a refresh to look and see where we can move some things and see what happens. Try to do the best we can.
All right. Um, Dr. Roush, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. Um, then I'm gonna throw a quick curve ball in then. What are some of the worst-case scenarios that can occur with budget shortfalls like that? Each one of you, you know, 30 seconds or so. Again, it's all speculative, you know, but but just to get the voters to understand and parents and stakeholders to really understand what happens if that doesn't pass. Dr. Roush, you first.
Okay, well, I mean, you do have to look at the budget. And we are already looking at where we can cut $9 million this year. And as she said, you do have to look at the programs. Probably have to look at class size because you'll have to with the board, with the buildings that we need and with the influx of the students coming in. You'll have to look at more students on the campuses. And some of the some of the districts, when this has happened to them, they've had to look at their fine arts programs. Some of them have cut them, cut the art programs. Maybe some of the academies, I mean, it would have to be things that, you know, we wouldn't want to have to cut. But if you better look at budgeting and you've got that much of a shortfall, those are just some of the things that could happen.
Appreciate that. All right, Mrs. Zula.
I agree with Dr. Roush with the programs and the classroom sizes. You know, more kids in the classrooms with teachers is less independent time, less focus on each kid. I know here at the high school, you know, not every kid wants to go to college. Not every kid wants to go to a four-year university. We have a lot of kids that are interested in welding and, you know, ROTC and whatnot. And we've had to cut a lot of those classes that were getting that were for those kids who didn't want to go off to high school or go off to college. And so it's just, it's really sad and disheartening to sit with these kids in their art meetings and to hear what they want to do. And we can't, we can't offer that right now. And there and there should be no reason for that. We should be able to. I mean, we just, you don't stop, you don't, you don't not invest into the kids' education. I mean, because they're they're going to be products of our education system, right? And if we don't invest in it, then how are they going to come out? You know, truly, truly invest in our kids. And we we don't, we don't shortfall our education system. It's so critical right now, especially.
All right. I appreciate that. That's one thing, try not to scare people, but try and get them to understand the realities, you know, of what happens with with budget cuts. So. All right. Similar to that, though, now we're going to talk about the bond, the four bond proposals. And so the first one to answer now will be Mrs. Zula. So if any of the four bond proposals fail in this election or in May of 2021, if on that ballot, what are your concerns?
Um, so I'm not always in favor of bonds, even though I'm in the education system. However, I am in favor of this one. I think it's important. It is true. NISD is projected to grow more. I even had, I'm in a, I'm in a PhD program as well in May. And in one of my doctoral classes, we had a demographer come out and he was speaking about the districts around around the area. And Northwest ISD was one. And it is projected that it is going to, you know, boom. And we are really going to need to do some some upgrading and, you know, do the things to accommodate that growth. A majority of the of the bond money is going to the to the growth of our schools. And I, but you know, there is, there is the, I think the real struggle is in the in the older community or senior citizens or our people who don't have students currently in the education system. They don't, they feel like they've been taxed enough. They feel like, you know, they've paid their fair share, which I feel I understand that. We got to find some ways to be able to utilize our buildings and our programs and stuff to reach out to the community, to keep everybody connected to our school system, to our education system. So if if those if those don't pass, I mean, again, you you do the best that you can. But eventually, eventually, they're going to have to pass a bond at some point. Truly necessary. It can, maybe it won't pass this time, but it will keep coming up and keep coming up. So if we can get it done now and make sure that the board does not use that money in a wasteful way, that it goes where it needs to go and in the best way possible, then hopefully, we'll be covered for a very long time.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Roush, that same question, which is if any of the four bond proposals fail in this election or in May of 2021, if on that ballot, what are your concerns?
Well, first of all, the board does not have the ability to waste the money because we have a long-range planning committee. They're the ones who come up with where the needs are. They present it to us. And that bond money has to use be used for these specific items. And as she was saying, with, we have a demographer. He comes in four times a year and he goes through and projects what our growth is going to be, what our capacity, what our buildings are going to be. Then we also have financial people. And because of the growth that's coming in, that's why passing the bond is not going to raise your property taxes because we have so much coming in that are those going to be in those houses that we need those schools to take care of those kids, that it's their property taxes that'll keep up with that. In fact, our financial people said that we could even go higher than that. We thought this was high enough. And again, it was the long-range planning committee that came in and said, this is what our needs are. This is the amount we want to ask for.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Zula, anything you'd like to add?
Well, when I when I said wasteful in regards to just making sure that because regardless of whether the bond passes or not, tax monies are still being utilized in our school system. And we just want to make sure that they go to the right places. I think sometimes when you have a board full of members who are so distant from the classroom, who haven't been there in a long time, it's easy to make decisions without regard to maybe how it affects students or teachers in the actual classroom setting. And so it's just, just to kind of make sure that all the monies, regardless where they come from, are spent in a good, resourceful way.
All right. Thank you. All right. So for the next question, we will have Dr. Roush go first. The this question is, how do you support diversity in hiring staff and administrators to reflect the student population of Northwest ISD?
Well, we do have a very diverse popularity and all school districts try to hire people, hire staff that mirror our student population. And it's not always that. It's not always possible for many reasons. But we have a, we have a goal and an equity framework. And what we do is we try to meet all of our students, no matter how diverse they are, at the levels that they are. We assess their strengths. We use their strengths to build on as we're supporting. And we try to individualize what each of our children needs to be able to go wherever it is they want to go, whether it's college or military or the workforce. And even with our career and technology department, it talks about our ESL students and that language would not be a deterrent to keep those students forgetting the programs and the opportunities that they want.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Zula, the question, I'll repeat it. How do you support diversity in hiring staff and administrators to reflect the student population of NISD?
I think it's important to make sure that you you keep an eye on your population. I had written it down. I believe I was looking at the TAPR report through TA. You know, it tells a lot about, you know, our kids and their state assessment scores and our student population and our teacher population. It tells it all. You know, and right now, our student population is sitting at about 62% of white and 21.9% Hispanic. And our teacher population is 88% of white. So that right there is something, you know, to consider, just kind of watching all that, just making sure that you're offering a wide cultural awareness of of all teachers and staff in your school. You want to support that diversity. You want to show that our our school system backs up that diversity and that we introduce that culture to everybody. So I just think it's important just to kind of, that needs, that needs to be kept an eye on at all times, I think. And then you just kind of, and you make decisions to to unwrap that, to make sure that you're you're matching your student population. It's important, especially when they're little, it's important for them to see that in our school systems that we have that diverse group of people because our kids are sitting in classrooms with a whole bunch of diverse kids with different cultural and ethical and disabilities and whatnot. It's important that they see that in our teachers as well.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Roush, Dr. Roush, would you like to respond at all real quick to anything?
Yes, I would. NISD does embrace our diverse culture. And we we are encouraging cultural proficiency. We're eliminating virus and we're increasing the awareness of the different and diverse cultures in our in our society and in our school district.
All right. Thank you. All right. So the next question now for Mrs. Zula. What is your philosophy on homework for elementary and secondary grade levels?
Oh.
I know, kind of a, it's kind of really broad. So feel free how to, how you want to land this one, either one of y'all.
I'd say what?
What is your philosophy on homework for elementary and secondary grade levels?
Okay, homework. Okay. So I know back in the day when I was in school, homework was a big deal, right? You got homework and you set it home. But I think it's good practice, but it's not always reflective of a student's ability because a lot of the times we have parents that help. We have, we have older siblings that help. We get tutors that help. And that's, that's awesome. So but as far as as using that as an indicator of where we sit or as grades or whatnot, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that. I think homework is important to keep your mind fresh, to keep some practice going on too. But as far as, you know, grades and stuff like that, I I don't know if I necessarily agree with that at all, at all times. But I I know that it can get overwhelming. I know some of our kids, I I think there's a big push, you know, with our our curriculum and to have all these, you know, high assessment scores and GT and AP. And so it's just becoming where these kids are so focused on their As and their Bs that it becomes really hard on our kids. So I, you know, homework is good in some ways. But I think it it needs to be dialed, it can be dialed back a little bit.
All right. Dr. Roush, what is your philosophy on homework for elementary and secondary grade levels?
I think homework is part of school. And I think a lot of it is so that students can be more independent after they get the core concepts in school. It gives them some independent time to work on them, but also gives them a chance for the parents to be connected with what's going on in the schools. And I know I've heard some things about some of the high school students feel like they have way too much homework to do as far as because of the amount of classes that they've heard that they have. And when you add it all up, it turns out to more than, it's a little over empowering for some of them to to get it finished, especially if they have extra curricular activities.
All right. Mrs. Zula, anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just, I think it's hard to be able to determine or to use independence in that situation. I think you can, I think you can prove independence in the classroom. I think there are ways to make your classroom instruction diverse and just done in a certain way where it doesn't all, it doesn't have to be done at home so much. There are things that can be done in the classroom. I've just seen it for over 10 years. It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily do a lot of good. That's just my opinion.
All right. Thank you. All right. Now for the next question. Dr. Roush.
Yes.
Which holds greater value to you, an AP test or dual credit class? Why?
Well, that's a hard question. I know I hear a lot of very positive input from the parents for the dual credit because it's like, you know, we're so, we're so thankful that our children are given the opportunity to have one year, two years of school finish when they graduate from high school. And I know the importance of the AP courses also because in essence, the AP is what the elementary gifted program is for their students. So it's challenging and they have opportunities to do things that they might not get to do otherwise. So that would be hard for me to say which one was more valuable, depending on the child and the parent, I think.
All right. Mrs. Zula, which holds greater value to you, an AP test or dual credit class? Why?
Well, I agree with Dr. Roush. I think I think it depends on the student. I think that's part of that diversity and reaching out to all of our students or all of our different types of learners. Right? So you got our kids who are GT, who need that academic challenge. So that AP test is important to those to those students, whereas maybe not so important. So that AP test is important to those, to those students, whereas maybe not so important to other students. You know, and those dual credit classes are also important for those kids who are very college bound and, and, and want to get that stuff kind of out of the way. And, and they're on fire and they know what they want to do after high school and uh that's amazing for those kids. So I think they're equally important. Um depending on, on which student you're looking at and which families you're looking at. We, they all, they all want.
Right. Uh. Dr. Rausch, is there anything else you want to add regarding AP or dual credit?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, good deal. Um, so Mrs. Zula, the next question for you is. How would you improve transitions for sped students from each level of campus? So like from elementary school to middle school, from middle school to high school, and then high school to fly little butterfly fly.
Right. So um I think it's important for our elementary, so uh so fifth graders. Um they need to be speak, those fifth grade teachers need to be working with those middle school teachers. And those middle school teachers need to be working with those high school teachers. There needs to be some time in there where we can, they can talk. Um, they can talk from, you know, grade level. So from elementary to secondary is huge. And I know that for us, we go over to the middle school. Uh, we go to their IEP meetings, we sit there, we talk about um with the parents about what high school is. We make sure that their um schedules properly reflect um their, their needs and their IEPs. So you, you've got to have those specialists there um in those IEP meetings and involved in that students last year. So in fifth grade. Middle school needs to start being involved in our students. And then, you know, eighth grade, high school needs to start being involved in our students. Cause at the age of thirteen, we start talking about transition. And at the age of fourteen in high school as a freshman, those students are in their IEP meetings. And every year from the age of fourteen until they graduate, a transition specialist is to meet with those students. To ensure that they are, they are given appropriate outside agencies and Texas Workforce Commission. So it's, it's very important that our teachers have that time to talk with each other across, across school or. Education levels. Um and then when they get to high school, we, we are in constant talk with Texas Workforce Commission. And um the, the areas around here that are hiring, like some of the grocery stores and some of the restaurants to try to get our students. We, we take our students out during the day to do work training. It's just very important that you, your program is designed so that. Specialists can start interacting with those students in their last year of their schooling before they transition up to the next one.
All right. Uh, then for you, Dr. Ra- Rausch, how would you improve transitions for sped students from each level of campus?
What we do is similar thing to what she's talking about as far as the transitioning to each level depending on each student's ability and their IEPs. Um, and then once they have met the graduation, we also have our RISE program where we work with the eighteen to twenty-one year olds. And so transitioning into the workforce. We also have um Sunrise Creations. Where these, the special ed students that have completed their IEP um graduation requirements. That they're actually running their own business. And so they have um business knowledge and contacts. And they do the delivering and they have um practice making their own money, so to speak. And then we also reach out to other businesses also.
Excellent. Anything you'd like to finish up with, Mrs. Zula?
No, I just want to point out that it is, it is so critical to have those. And I know I keep saying this, but it's really important for those teachers to be there for like, for our sixth grade teachers to be there at the fifth grade IEP meetings. We, we have students that are transferred to middle schools and high schools. Their parents and those students have no idea what they're facing. They have no idea which math class to put them in. They have no idea which English class to put them in. Their IEPs are not right, their goals are not right. It's, it can be a huge mess. And then that starts a whole other compliance issue with state and federal laws. So it's just, it's really crucial that those teachers are really involved. That's going to make your transition the smoothest. It's going to make it the most successful.
All right. Thank you for, thank y'all for answering that one. So I'm gonna go just off bit a little bit real quick and um, so I'm an adult with disabilities. I got burned real bad. So my hands are my main disability. So I've, you know, some, some limited use of my hands. And I've really, you know, I've learned how to understand other peoples and a bit, not, you know, just have empathy for other people with disabilities. I've learned how to understand with children with disabilities and, you know, for me, I'm an adult and sometimes I need services from the VA to help me with different accommodations. What I recognize, what I want, what I just, you know, I was talking on this real quick, but when some parents like, well, my kid's not in sped, what's that to do? The reality is, these kids that need any sort of special education assistance beyond just gen ed students. Um, the goal is to make sure to get them uh confident uh and aware of wha- of how to control their, whatever their disability is. Physical, social, emotional, whatever their disability is, that then when they become adults, that they're less dependent on quote unquote the system, you know? That they can live independent lives, healthy, fun, independent lives. And so that's why it's so crucial to make sure that sped kids. Are given the assistance they can, the accommodations, so then they can be independent. Cause that is ideally the goal for, for anyone with a disability. Um with, within the world that of what their disability or, or, or the ability of, of, of how they choose to live their life. So I just want to kind of go in that because I know sometimes most gen ed, general education folks are like, oh, what's sped, you know? Um, all right. So now we're going to get to uh some of the real fun stuff. Um, it's all fun, actually. Uh, so Dr. Rausch, what from House Bill three, infamous House Bill three? Has hurt Northwest ISD the most?
What has hurt us the most? Well, what has hurt us the most besides the fact that some of our funding, state funding. Was taken away and yet our um Robin Hood donation has been increased, increased. And so that's part of the issue with having the TRE, how the importance of the TRE this year is because we're now. This year, I think we paid three million dollars. Next week, next year, they're wanting five to ten million dollars for Robin Hood. And to take from us. So even though we're a fast growing district, um HB three was not. Um, and there are other districts that it was not friendly to. There were some that it was, but ours, it didn't happen to be. Because the amount that we're going to have to pay Robin Hood.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mrs. Zula, what from House Bill three has hurt Northwest ISD the most?
Uh, I would have to agree with Dr. Rausch. Well, as the, the Robin Hood is insane. I think I saw like in ten years, Northwest ISD would have given a hundred and sixteen million dollars.
Last years.
Yeah, okay. Oh, the last ten years. That's where I saw. And I mean, that's an incredible amount of money and um. And, and while I understand the reasoning behind that, uh, you know, I think that is a major problem for a lot of our districts. Um, I know we're not the only district that struggles with, with the uh recapture and the Robin Hood. But that is something that needs to be looked at. You know, when that lawsuit went through in the Texas Supreme Court and they said that, you know, the Texas. Um, fina- the school financial system was unconstitutional. Or it wasn't unconstitutional, but it wasn't, it wasn't really that great. They should have come back and, and, and edited it and made it better. And they never really did. They, they keep making all these changes, but they've never, they've never fixed the situation. So House Bill three, along with every other. Um, decision they've made has been really hard and has hit our school districts so hard. And that's why we have to come out so much and ask the taxpayers to help us because we are, you know, our hands get tied, but. Um, you know, the compressed tax rates and the ha- and the recapture, um, they, they really hurt our district every year.
All right. Uh, Dr. Rausch, anything else about uh HB three hurting or weird?
We have, um, you know, we, we are now um have to incorporate full day pre-K. Which is a good thing, especially for identifying children that have extra needs, the earlier you are able to work with them. Um, the better the chances of, of helping them, support them. But that means that part of this uh bond is to build those rooms that we have to have at fourteen of our elementary schools. That we did not have enough room for all day pre-K. And that's not cheap. It's unfunded. They didn't give us some money for it. They just said we had to do it.
That's correct. And part of that, then I'll just go ahead and kind of go off a tangent. Cause some of that ties back into the Vader also, that voter approved tax rate election because. Oh, the mi- uh, well, I think like eighty, I don't know, it was eighty-four percent, eighty-seven percent of the school district budget is actually just. Personnel costs, you know, if you think of just teachers. Well, the big part of HB three was an unfunded mandate saying, hey, school districts, you have to give. Uh, teachers and I think maybe counselors and lib- librarians pay raises, but we're not going to give you the money to do it. You have to do it yourself. Um, and so again, I know for, 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 for most people, they're like, what's the Vader? What's all this? Again, it's, it's the cost to take care of personnel for stuff like that. And it's the difficult situation that HB three has put uh Northwest into. We could do a whole nother forum on just school finance, trying to, the ins and outs and how, you know, how frustrating it is and, and. Why it's not easy for most people to understand either though. Um, but we'll, we'll try to get off of HB three. Now we're going to spin it though. So Mrs. Zula, what from HB three has helped NISD the most? If you want to, you know, again, think of those unfunded mandates.
My gosh, I mean, I would like to say the teacher raises, but I know that didn't really work out that great. So um, no, I. It's supposed to be transformative, I understand that. Um, but again, I think the further you are from the classroom, the easier it is to make decisions. That, that don't necessarily do anything for our classroom. And um, honestly, I just wish they would kind of butt out a little bit. I think that they are in our system too much. Um, I think that they are constantly um telling us what we need to do. And not giving us the money for it. I know they keep thinking we have, we have all this extra money. Um, I, I honestly don't really have anything positive to say about House Bill three at the moment. Um, but if I do, I'll, I'll get back with you. Cause I, I don't, I don't have anything.
All right. Uh, we'll get, you, you do get a chance to re- re- review, at least have a little second piece here in a second. So there's that at least for you. So. Uh, Dr. Rausch, anything from House Bill three that's helped Northwest ISD at all? That you can think of?
Well, we are going to get full day pre-K even if it's unfunded, um, which will be helpful for a, a lot of our students. Um, but other than that, uh even though it's unfunded. And I'm, and I will piggyback on what Jennifer says, the legislature makes a lot of decisions. Uh, with better, that are non-funded and then they push, well, lowering the tax rate too. I mean, that was, that was not a good thing. It didn't help us and it helped um some of the property owners. But now we're going to have to come back and try to figure out how to get some of that money back, which is the reason for the bond and the TRE. Um, but no, other than that, I, I really can't think of anything that helped us per se. It did, as she said, help some of the librarians and the counselors and some of the teachers. Uh, but it hurt us in the fact that you don't lower somebody's salary the next year. Once they've got that, they have, you keep paying that.
And I know, I'm sorry.
All right.
No, I mean, I think, I assume Dr. Rausch is done, so it's your turn to re- have a, just to wrap up on this one.
Okay, and you know, and I, and I know they also gave money for dyslexia and special ed funding and I. Um, but that in turn didn't work out because, um, you know, the state of Texas had supposedly gotten in trouble because we were um. We were capping our special ed students. That was not true. And so they sent out, TA sent out this letter. Saying now that we can have, you know, they, every year we send out a letter to the community saying that we'll test for, for special education. So our, our testing rate has increased, our sped population has increased. Um, our dis- our students with dyslexia has increased. So all the funding that they gave us has gone back down now where it used to be. And so it's just every time that they do something kind of positive, they do something on the, on the other end to kind of negate that. And then it, it goes right back to, well, we're still back in a hole. So now we have to have a bond, now we have to do this. So, you know, voting in your state and federal elections is very important. That's what I tell all of our students at the, in our R meeting, when they complain about our edu- our high school students complain about our education system all the time. I tell them, you need to go vote when you hit eighteen. So.
And all the election, including the local elections like this one. Absolutely. All right. Um, all right. So we're going to change it up a little bit now. So uh, Dr. Rausch. If you are elected, explain uh how you will go about evaluating the superintendent. How will you know if Dr. Warren is doing a good job?
Well, we do this every year and actually, one of the things that's coming up, we just finished with that um a couple of weeks ago. Um, one of the things that we decided to do is to change our evaluating tool. Um somewhat to be a little more specific, but we do a very thorough job of um. Of, I mean, it's a lot of paperwork, it's a lot of research, uh it's a lot of getting the information from. Um, the different departments as to how this program did, how the students did. We were at a real disadvantage this year because we didn't have all the testing data. Um, and that's something that we analyze to see how, how, how is he doing? How are we doing at the same thing?
All right. Uh, Mrs. Zula, uh same question. So if you're elected, explain how you will go about evaluating superintendent. Um, how will you know if Dr. Warren is doing a good job?
Um, well, there's an overall health of a district. It's kind of like when you walk into a high school campus or an elementary campus, you can kind of just feel. The health of that campus. Um, you know, collecting your multiple sources of data in order to determine, A, how healthy your, your school district is. Parents, how happy are they? How, how unhappy are they um hearing, you know, listening to the school board members? It's just important that everybody you come in contact with is going to have something to say and um. It's just, you, you just kind of pick up on the health of the district. And, you know, it's important to go through those T A P R reports. I was doing that um prior to this, to this meeting, um, you know, and it talks about all of our star scores. Which I, I hate to even focus on state assessment because, you know, as educators, we just, our parents, we're not really fond of it. But um unfortunately, it is how we're rated right now and it is accountability. Um, so just kind of watching all the numbers. And I think what helps me um with that is that that's what I do every day. Like I, I take in data, I look at numbers, I look at. The whole person, the whole student, and we determine where we need to go from there, strengths and weaknesses, and what is not working and what's working. Um, so it's just uh making sure that he's got, and ultimately at the end of the day, every decision that we make should be what's best for kids. Right? Like it should be what's best for our kiddos and what's going to provide them with their best education opportunity and. If, we need to make sure that he's doing that. Where he puts the money, where, where his recommendations are, is he visiting the campuses? Is he, is he keeping his um face in, in, in the community or, you know? It's just an overall health of it too, on top of the, the tools that they also use.
All right. Um, Dr. Rausch, anything else you want to add to that about um evaluating Dr. Warren?
I just want to say that Dr. Warren does, he is, he is an ever, I mean, he has so much energy. He makes sure that he's at every campus. He's uh very community oriented. He's very sports oriented. I mean, he really, really puts out the effort. Of being his face is seen everywhere. And that's one thing we always agree in very highly on.
Excellent, thank you. All right. So uh, we're going to transition a little, little bit back um in a way, kind of circle around a little bit. To uh not HB three specific, but in the generality of it though. So um, so Mrs. Zula, Zula, if, if, if elected. Um, you know, you will, you, you will be on the board as it begins for this new legislative session. That will affect uh the school district and all of, all public education for the state of Texas. Um. What, do you have any sort of plan of what you would do uh both on the board and in the community to help? Um, change the public education, uh school finance for the district?
How to change that? Well, you know, I mean, I, I don't know the ins and outs of it yet. But you know, there, there's got to be ways to reach out to the community to um, to increase more money. I mean, utilizing all, we have some fancy. Um, tennis courts and we have some fancy buildings that, you know, taxpayers have paid for. Um, I know some um people have reached out to me with concerns of, you know, people who are no longer have students in the education system. They would like to utilize um those facilities. Um, there's, there's just got to be ways. Um, creative ways to be able to, to uh do some more financial things for our schools. Um, but you know, it's. it's really all about equity too. And, and, and I hate to bring that up, but I mean, we, we have got to make sure that our, our money is spread out evenly, that all of our programs are, are taken care of equally. You know, that they're our sped population or five oh four or GT or ESL. Um, we need to make sure that those are equitable for all of our students. And, um, I know that's a big thing. That's a, that's at least, um, in a couple of the school districts I worked at, that's not always the case. Being able to spread it evenly among our schools, make sure our schools are equal with how many students there they have and the teachers. It's just making sure that it's evenly distributed throughout our district. And that everything that we invest into is what is going to be best for our kids. And what is going to be best for them when they graduate, because what we do today and what we, we do at the school board meeting on Tuesday is going to affect our students on Wednesday. Like we have to keep that in mind. And it's so much easier when a school board member goes to work, goes to the board meeting on Tuesday and makes those decisions about those kids. And then goes back to work on Wednesday morning to work with those kids. There's a, there's a sense of responsibility and advocacy there for those, for those students.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Dr. Roush, um, if reelected, uh, for the upcoming, uh, you know, legislative session, uh, in the spring, what would you do to, to rally support to change the school, school finance for the school district?
One of the things that we always, that we already have in place and, and it's when you're a member of a school board, it's you as an individual. It's not you as an individual. You work with a team. You work with, because you represent every child and every family in the district. It doesn't matter where you live, you represent everyone. And that's one of our things is every child, every day. And that is truly what we try to do. Now, one of the things that we are, um, encouraging everybody to do is to, um, contact the legislature. Tell them, you know, how these things are affecting us, telling them how these things are not working for us. Um, and so that's what we're encouraging all of the people in all of our school meetings. And we will be meeting with the state representatives, I believe, um, in November. Providing I'm still on the board. Um, I always go to those meetings, but, um, that's one of the things that we're, that we work on as a team. Because we don't do anything as an individual ourselves, other than, um, to try to influence our other school board members as to why they should vote this way or why they should vote that way, how you feel this way, why you feel that way.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Zula, anything else you'd like to add? Okay. All right. So now, um, you know, kind of, you know, this one ties more, this next question ties more to, you know, what we've been going through since the COVID messes hit us, you know, we're still in it. So for Dr. Roush, what do you feel the district could do better to service mental health needs of our staff and students?
What we could do better? Actually, um, this is our third year of implementing our SEL with our students. And because of the COVID, if you go to the counselors pages, it is, uh, there are several things to do with mental health, um, for our students, our staff and our families. There's sites that they can reach out to if the family feels like, even during the time when we were not attending school, they could have either face to face of a tele, with a, like a telemed visit or a Zoom visit with the counselors. There's, uh, websites where you, they have on the, um, website where you can go to to get information on, um, how to uh, like notice what are some of the, um, symptoms of suicide, depression. There's a cute, a bunch of cute little videos about for the children, how to explain COVID. And so I think that we've really, I think most of the school districts and the, um, district actually, I mean, in the state have been focusing on the social emotional development, um, of our students and our staff.
All right. Thank you.
Answer your question?
Yes. Mrs. Zula, would you want me to ask a question again?
Uh, please.
Yep. What do you feel the district could do better to service the mental health needs of our staff and students?
Well, I mean, listening to Dr. Roush, all that is fantastic. I do think that with our, with our kids, we try here on the campus to not, we, we try to, uh, we teach them, um, you know, the CDC things and washing our hands and, you know, keeping the sanitizers throughout the stuff. But we also try to keep their school day as normal as we can as possible. We just try to, um, we try to teach them about what's happening, but we try to keep things normal because, um, you know, it, it has helped us a lot. It has helped us a lot in our social emotional. When we first started back, children were high, um, high anxiety. They were nervous about the germs. They were nervous about this. But when they see that, um, in their classroom setting that these things, these certain situations are happening, it really helps to calm their fears. Um, and making sure they have access to their school counselors and, um, and stuff like that. So, I mean, having those people like Dr. Roush was saying, having those resources available at hand for our teachers and, um, for our students is huge. I mean, I know, um, if some districts have like hotlines, like a crisis, not really crisis hotlines, but they pay with their, their money from the district. They pay for them to have, um, like they can call someplace and get some kind of counseling. Um, they can get some sort of, um, supports that way as teachers. And that's another good resource to have kind of like a line for them to call and talk to. But also just, I think the support from the teachers as well. I know there's a lot of fear with some of our teachers who have those underlying conditions or they have people at home with those underlying conditions. They're really nervous about coming to work. Um, so, you know, trying to reassure them as best as possible, but also providing them a way to, um, if possible, do their job at home until they feel safe to come back. I know a lot of teachers have had to resign, um, and leave the classroom, which they love because their fear or their health. Their fear of their health has, um, has really had to, been to make a tough choice. Um, and so I think making sure that we are, we are looking at that too could be very beneficial.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Roush, anything else you want to add about, uh, mental health needs for our staff and students?
We do have, um, offer a mental, um, health hotline for our, our staff as well, that they can go to.
All right. Thank you. All right. So the next question, um, you know, some, some people like to always bag on the federal government. Uh, but the reality is, um, it is a part of, uh, of education, public education. So, um, and, and this is, this, you go very broad with this. This isn't necessarily Department of Education either, when I, when I say this. So Mrs. Zula, is there anything from the federal level of government that you believe helps students of NISD? Of Northwest?
Sure. I, I think whatever amount of funding they give us helps us. I think, uh, the more that they, they, I wish they would come down and, and just be a part of the school system for a little bit to see what's happening. But I do think that, that the money that they're helping us, I mean, we do get a lot of things, um, I can speak for like our students with disabilities like IDEA and ADA. We do get a lot of, um, supports and resources from them. Those do help our students a lot. But, I mean, yes, it's, it's, I'm not, you know, I'm not a big fan, but, um, whatever they can do, whatever they can do, what any money, anything that they can do helps, helps our students. Anything.
All right. Dr. Roush, uh, is there anything from the federal level of government that you believe helps students of Northwest ISD?
Well, as Jennifer said, our Title One fundings and our, um, fundings for our special ed and, um, children with disabilities. It, it's not a big part of our budget, but every bit helps, especially when it comes to, um, children that need that extra help and extra funding. I know that they were offering, um, certain programs this summer for our children, uh, with low SES as help for help feeding on top of what the school district was, uh, providing and the local communities was providing. There was a federal funding that they could actually go and get money to help feed their families during the crisis. So I think anything like that is very helpful for our students.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Zula, anything else as far as we're all? Okay. I can roll. All right. Um, so Dr. Roush, even though the school board has to work together, are there any changes you would like to see in the district that are realistic? Not just rub a genie lamp and make happen, but you know, if you, if you had maybe a little bit more influence or, or could, could, you know, could, could get all, all, all other six members in agreement with you on something. What, what do you, what would you like to, to, to have any changes to the school district?
Well, we would all like more funding from the state government. That would help a great deal. I, I, I've worked mostly with ESL and struggling students and, um, I think reading is the most important thing that, um, a child can learn. And I think that children do need, all children need to be able to really read on grade level. I'm not sure that at this time, it, it's also very helpful for our, our teachers because a lot of our teachers are great classroom teachers. But, and they can recognize there's a reading problem with our children, but they don't necessarily have time during their day to help that. So I would like to see more reading interventionists.
All right. Excellent. Uh, Mrs. Zula, even though the school board has to work together, are there any changes you would like to see in the district that are realistic?
Um, I think our programming for our students, I, I think, again, I don't think they're quite equitable. You know, we, we, our special ed side, our dyslexia side, um, I believe that the dyslexia program could be better. I know when I, um, when I worked for a different district, we had a lot of people transferring in from Northwest ISD because they were, they were not satisfied. They were unhappy with the dyslexia services that they were being given here in Northwest. And so they were going to other school districts. At the time, and I, I, I think it's changed now, but the, um, certified acquisition language therapist, the Couts who do the dyslexia training, um, were not here and not, not really highly involved in Northwest at the time. So I just think revamping our programs for our students with disabilities, just any disability, yeah, or in, and ESL. So our ESL, our gifted and talented, our special ed, our five oh four, those things need to just make sure that those programs are equitable. And I really truly think that they need educators, current educators on that board, even if it's not me. I just, I truly believe that you cannot, you cannot make all the best decisions for our students if you do not have current educators who are in those classrooms with those students on that board.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Roush, anything else you'd like as far as that to add, as far as, you know, beyond what you said, as far as having reading intervention, reading?
Reading intervention, more trained reading interventions is basically, um, in response to what she was saying about some of the parents who are going to other districts, we did train, um, teachers to be, um, certified academic language dyslexia interventionist. And we found that it really wasn't cost effective and it wasn't getting the results because the program did not work as well here as if you took your child to Scottish Rites because of the implementation. And I did teach, um, dyslexia students using the Scottish Rite, intervention with them also. So I understand what she's talking about.
All right. Thank you. All right. So we're getting to the end. I've got one actual question left. And I'll keep to that instead of throwing curveballs to y'all. So Mrs. Zula, you're the one that's going to answer this one first, this last question first. Although this is an unprecedented time of social distancing and new norms, how are you reaching the parents, uh, members of the community and students that are unfamiliar with you, uh, or your background? And, uh, how do you plan best serve the district? Through the communication and, and moving forward?
So, um, I, through Facebook, I'm part of the Trophy Club Neighborhood Page, the Trophy Club Boys, like all the Trophy Club area pages. Um, I also, um, have my, um, campaign website that's out there. My personal email is out there. In fact, I've been getting questions. I've been getting emails. And I communicate right back. I've been getting instant messages through Facebook and I communicate right back. I just, I love that part. Like I love hearing what's happening. I love hearing what's going on. I love the different views and the different ideas because, I mean, that's how you make your best, best decisions is hearing the, the, the input and from the people who it's truly affecting. So, you know, I don't know. I've been to board meetings where, you know, the people can come in, the community members come in and talk. They get their five minutes or whatnot and they have to go and sit down and they may or may not ever hear a response back from them. And those, those parents, those community members really took time out of their day to go speak in front of the board because there's something that's truly um, aggravating them or hurting them, or they really want to be heard. And, um, I know some of them don't feel like that, that happens. I really, I really, really, really want to be a source of communication. I am right now with my parents, of my students. Um, I am with, um, outside agencies. I mean, it's just all about keeping those lines of communication open. And that's what I want to do. I want to be an advocate for our, our, our classrooms. I want to be an advocate for our students and our parents. And, um, and I just think, and I think that you've gotta have an educator that's in the classroom that can do that. Because only then can you feel their empathy. You know, you can feel the empathy. You can feel, you can, you can resonate with them. You can understand with them. And then you can go to the board and you can say to your other board members, like this is the situation. This is the scenario. This is what's happening in these classrooms. It's just kind of to have a person on that board to try just try to speak up for our kids and for our parents by being in that classroom. So I, I plan on, and I guess you guys have emails, but it looks like they're, they're all like the same email, like NISDTX.org or something like there. I don't know if you guys and the board members have actual personal emails that go directly to you. I would assume you do. But I, I think it's important to have them to have access to you, other than the two minutes or three minutes or whatever they get to speak.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Dr. Roush, I'll ask you the exact same question. Although this is an unprecedented time of social distancing and new norms, how are you reaching, uh, parents, uh, members in the community and students that are unfamiliar with you, your background, and how do you best plan to serve the district if reelected?
Okay. I do have a Facebook page, um, that I use, um, to get information out to them. And what Jennifer was talking about, those parents that come to speak their two or three minutes. By law, the, um, school board members cannot communicate with them at that time. But depending on what the issues and the problems are, somebody from the district, depending on what the issue is, reaches out to those people. And I do have, because I did work in the district for thirteen years with different in different, um, capacities, classroom teacher, ESL teacher, reading recovery teacher, reading recovery teacher leader for the district dys, dyslexia assessment. I was a dyslexy assessor, assessment assessor. And, um, I was also the interventionist for math reading ESL and dyslexia for several years. So I do have a lot of people in the district that come to me with questions that I answer and go back through, kind of, face to face usually or email.
All right. Excellent. Uh, Miss Zula, do you want to respond with anything else or would you just like to move forward and, uh, have a closing statement?
Um, I think I'm okay to move forward.
All right. Um, well, uh, real quick before I have y'all do your closing statements, I just wanted to, uh, a quick little housekeeping. So we, we started, we were able to zoom on, uh, started the zoom and able to do broadcast on, on YouTube live and on Facebook Live. And whatever reason, Facebook Live shut down. So we've only been on YouTube Live. So to everyone that's viewing this right now, one way or another, I apologize about that. But, um, as soon as we're done with this, I'm going to upload it. So we'll be on the Facebook advocacy page also. So for folks who love their Facebook, it'll be there. So I just wanted to say that real quick. But, um, we'll go ahead and have y'all do your closing statements. We're early, so I'm not going to sit here and, you know, I've been pretty good. I haven't had a timer on you or anything, so I'll just let you do how you want to, you know? So, uh, Mrs. Zula, go ahead, please.
Okay. Um, so I, I'm a mom, I'm a community member, I'm a taxpayer. I'm also an educator. And so I come, I come to And so I come, I come to this um, board table with those different aspects in mind. Um, I'm currently, you know, finishing up my PhD in educational leadership with my superintendency certification. I've got the two master's degrees, a master's in educational leadership and in special education, um, and. I truly feel like not only does my background and my education and what I currently do for a living really help. Guide the decisions that I would vote for, um, but I'm also very open to communicating with our community. I really wanna know, um, what's out there, I really wanna know what's best, because there's gotta be a way to fix our system. We cannot rely on the state to do it, we cannot wait until they come up with a good financial plan, we can't wait for that, we have got to do everything that we can. Because at the end of the day, it's our job to take care of those kids, because they're still kids. It's our job as parents and as educators to create an educational system that provides them with what they need, that they can go out in that workforce and they can compete. They're gonna be our future doctors and our future lawyers and mechanics, and they need that public school system to help them through that. We are more than just academics here, we, we take care of so many kids, we feed them, we bathe them, we love on them. We, we help them, we pray for them, we do all kinds of things for our students, we buy things for them, they don't even have, I mean. We love our kids as, as educators, and we need a voice on the board, we do. We need a voice on the board, we need a voice that has experience with our students with disabilities, and our students who need those extra resources. I think sometimes they get left out in our decisions, even though it's not purposeful, I just, I think that that happens. So I, whether I'm elected or not, my hope as a mother and as a community member is that one day, there is gonna be a current educator on that board. Maybe not all of them, but maybe even just one, you know, I mean. On the F F A board, you don't have chefs on the, on the aviation board, you know, you have, you have pilots. So it's just, it's just really important that we get somebody, we get people on there who are currently there, and I appreciate the current board members. They, they do a great job, um, I love how they love our community and our kids, but they do not know, they do not know about. How it feels and how it really truly um, connects with our students in the classroom and our teachers. I'd like to do that for our students.
All right, thank you very much, all right, Dr. Roush, your closing statement, please.
Hey, number one, I'd like, uh, I appreciate you having us here tonight and to be able to participate in this forum. Um, I think my education and my um. My thirteen years i- in, in all the different capacities um, with the district. And all of my different certifications, and most of them are working with the E S L and the struggling learners. I think I have a very, very good knowledge of our community, our education set, um, system. Plus, I have a lot of relationships with current people who are in the classrooms who I communicate with. I have a granddaughter in the district and my daughter and a lot of friends that I hear from on a regular basis. And they're always very impressed with the um, what our district does to communicate with all of them. And especially during these difficult times with what's the right thing to do and not, was a lot of communication coming from. Our superintendent and lots of comments, like more than in any of the other districts, and so, um. I, I think our board does a wonderful job, we have a wealth of resources. And um, we have a lot of internet, interneting that goes on between us and, and other people, so. Plus, as I said, the just, the, we are in the community and our superintendent, I don't see how he has the amount of energy. To do all of the interfacing and communication that he does with all of our community members. I appreciate your support and I hope to get your votes.
Well, thank you both so much, uh, thank you, Dr. Roush, thank you, Mrs. Zula. Um, for partaking in this forum for place six for the upcoming election, uh, I wish you both the best. Um, I just hope that uh, moving forward, that people understand how important their local government is. Uh, and uh, you know, funding the future, taking care of uh, of, of what happens within our school district, you know? Um, and uh, again, thank y'all so much for your time, and uh, we're gonna end it there, so.